The session of the State Board of Education is called to order. I noticed that nine members are present. Mr. McNeese is absent today, but the other nine members are present. Are there any changes in today's agenda? If not, a motion would be in order to approve the agenda as presented. Dean Horst made the motion and Ben Jones seconds the motion. All in favor, please raise your hand. All opposed? That appears to be nine zero. Thank you. At this time, we would like to welcome Alan Conroy, who is the Executive Director of Capers. And we appreciate you being here today to talk about, I believe, is it working after retirement or?
Yes, that's correct.
All sorts of stuff. So thank you for being here today, sir.
Thank you, and my pleasure, and certainly appreciate all of your service that you all provide the state. I think our Capers Board of Trustees has some big responsibilities and duties, but I know that those may dwarf and compare to the responsibilities that you all have to carry out. And of course, you've got a great staff to help you make that journey. But so today, I'm just here for a few minutes, and I guess, can you hear me okay without my mask? Is that, or with the mask? Okay, all right, well, maybe, maybe I will then. So I was invited here by the Commissioner to spend a few minutes talking about the exciting subject of working after retirement. And some of you may have heard maybe more about that than you ever wish to. It's been some challenges along the way, and so I'll just, gonna spend a little bit of time this morning talking to you about about it and kind of how we got there and the current provisions and and kind of the reasoning behind some of those provisions as best we can determine them. And just, just two little brief slides, of course. Capers, the retirement system serves, there's three different retirement systems, the regular Capers, which includes all the school members, the police and fire, and the retirement system for judges. And we, and there's about three hundred and twenty-five thousand members of Capers, about a hundred and five thousand retired members, about a hundred and fifty-five thousand active. Largest group is school, about eighty-five thousand Capers members who work for the schools. And then the balance then are people that have caper service but may have left public service, but they're not eligible for retirement because of the age requirements. And we interact with over fifteen hundred employers, so we got you there. You get to work with all those school districts, but we get to work with not only all the school districts, but the state of Kansas, all the counties, almost all the cities, City of Wichita is large enough to have their own retirement system. And then you get into all those special purpose districts like hospitals and community colleges, conservation districts, fire service protection districts, and so forth. Capers does have a board of trustees, and they have that fiduciary responsibility to always do what's best for the members. And you can see them, they're listed on the slide, four appointed by the governor, one by the President of the Senate, one by the Speaker of the House. The members, active and retired, get to elect two of the members, one on the school side, one on the non-school side. And then the state treasurer by virtue of that office is the ninth member, and they all serve four years. Their term of office is four years. So specifically to get to the charge today, as the Commissioner laid out for me, give you just a little bit about working after retirement, the history, talk about the legal and actuarial impacts of working after retirement, what are those current rules of working after retirement, and then what has been the experience of working after retirement? And so we go back really to the nineteen nineties, and generally, those rules that were in place at that time limited the ability of the retirees to return to work for the same employer, but not another Capers employer. And so in two thousand nine, the legislature passed a special rule to allow for members to make it more easily to return to work for the same employer. And those of you that maybe have been involved with this topic for a bit, back then, what was happening was a teacher would realize they could retire, take their full benefit, but then with the short sort of parameters of returning to work, they could go down to the street or down the highway to the very next school district or nearby school district, get hired by that district, get that salary as well as their Capers benefit. And so that caused a lot of consternation, some with policymakers, some with some local school officials that were, their employees were getting sort of cherry picked by the neighboring district, and so all kinds of problems along that line. So after, there was that sunset, so the legislature decided to extend that sunset after the retirement rules in twenty fifteen, and they were gonna try to set out working to establish a permanent set of rules. So a lot of work in twenty fifteen and twenty sixteen, the legislature was updating those working after retirement rules based on some feedback heard from a lot of school districts, other employers and retirees. And they were trying to make sure that whatever, whatever the solution was, that they were addressing the actuarial cost and the legal issues around returning after work, and we'll talk a little bit about that more in just a second. But the, and then also, I think the policymakers, the legislature wanted to make sure there was some employer flexibility there, particularly among the school districts in terms of working with those certified teaching positions. So the changes made in twenty fifteen and twenty sixteen, they added some new working after retirement rules, started July first of twenty sixteen, and they grandfathered in the old working after retirement rules, but best laid plans. Those of you that lived through that too, I mean, there were over thirteen different sort of categories for retirement. There was special ed, there was hard to fill, there were all these different things and different rates, and and it just got so, I think, complicated. The poor member, the retiree, had a terrible time figuring out if it applied to them or what applied to them. The school districts, the employers struggled mildly, and even at Capers, it was a challenge to figure out for this individual retiree which of those thirteen categories they fit in and what the conditions were and parameters, and so it was a challenge. So the legislature in twenty seventeen decided they'd try again, and so they made another attempt at working after retirement reform. They tried to establish a single set of rules for all the retirees and all the employers. There was a few minimal exceptions, for example, substitute teachers without a contract. In our mind, we think of them as daily call substitutes. It's so the school district calls the teacher, you know, at six thirty in the morning and says, you know, we've got somebody sick today. Can you come in? So in our mind, that's a daily call substitute, and that fits the exemption that the legislature set out to do in twenty seventeen, again, trying to simplify it, make it easier to understand and administer. As we talk about some of those legal implications, and that gets us, of course, to our doorstep of our friends at the IRS, which we always want to make happy if we can. Capers is a qualified, they call it a 401A retirement plan, and that's the Internal Revenue Code citation, and of course, there comes being a defined benefit plan, public sector. There's some tax benefits that come along with that, and so certainly, that's something, I think, the policymakers have decided that they want to protect to make sure that stays square with the IRS, that it meets those requirements of the 401A. The IRS also has a requirement, they call it a bona fide retirement, and that was, again, those instances happened in Kansas, happened in certainly other states where a person would retire one day, come back to work the very next day, same employer, same position, same office, and start getting the retirement benefit and continue to get their salary. The IRS has determined that that's not really a bona fide retirement, so and they're saying then, since it's not bona fide, you really can't make retirement benefits. They also have said through private letter rulings and so forth, that there has to be, so there has to be some type of waiting period, so you don't get that retire one day, come back to work the next. And there also has to be no pre-arrangement, so that means the employer, you know, two weeks before the individual retires, you know, maybe it's the retirement party, they say, we'd love to have you, we want to hire you back, you know, next fall or whatever like that. There can be no discussion about pre-arrangement to keep the IRS happy prior to, in this case, until our waiting periods have played out. And I guess those of you that may remember the old Maxwell Smart TV show, the cone of silence, that's what we've always told our employers, that this cone of silence comes over these retirees until they get out of the required waiting period, because then that way, it's, we're clean, we're upright with the IRS, and there should not be any thing that they could call foul on, you know, pre-arrangements or, you know, anything along those lines. As we look to the actuarial impact, and this is probably even more bit challenging than try to navigate all the IRS requirements. The old working after retirement rules provided really an incentive, and of course, we think our Capers members and retirees are a sharp group, and they figure out what's best for them financially on an individual basis. And so those old rules provided that financial incentive for licensed teachers to retire and return to work. And in fact, the data, and it's a behavioral thing, which is always a challenge to kind of quantify that, but the data showed that this group of licensed teachers was retiring about eight years earlier on average than retirees who did not return to work. So if you have early retirement, of course, then that means there's shorter period for contributions, and there's longer benefit, longer time for the benefit payout. So if a person retires eight years earlier than what's anticipated, with all the pre-funding set up in terms of the actuary, make the system pay accordingly, it has an impact there. And of course, then if you're filling a position instead of a normal active contributing employee with a non-contributing retiree, then that can result in lost contributions to the system. And as I mentioned, it's a behavioral choice, it's always can be challenging to try to quantify that. But on an individual basis, you know, that may not be a big cost, but there have been over six thousand retirees who had returned to work during twenty seventeen, so lots, lots of people that had looked at that and figured that out, that it might be advantageous to them. So what are the current working after retirement rules? And there's really two parts. There's the waiting period, and then there's the employer assessment. Some call it the Capers penalty. We think employer assessment has a better ring to it than a penalty, so that's what we call it. We call it employer assessment. So there's that waiting period, employer assessment. And the current rules say, started in January first of twenty eighteen, that for those retirees that retire before age sixty-two, they have to set out a hundred and eighty days. And if they retire at age sixty-two or older, then they only have to retire, have to set out sixty days. And this, that determination, of course, was made by the legislature. The IRS is less concerned once a person gets to age sixty-two, and those waiting period dates, you know, there's, there's a variety in those, certainly across the country. Some retirement systems may only have a thirty-day retirement, or waiting period. Our police and fire for public safety officers has a thirty-day waiting period. So there's a hundred and eighty days or sixty days, there can be no pre-arrangement, as I mentioned. And the other thing to remember is there's never any limitations on the earnings of the retiree. So sometimes, or like social security, sometimes there's an offset. If you, you get your social security check and you're earning money, then there may be an offset, but there's no earnings limitation on the retiree. If they go in any situation, and of course, they can go to work for a private sector employer, and of course, none of this applies, it's only if they come back to work for a public sector, a Capers participating employer. And then there's the assessment. What is that assessment? Well, for the employers then, they have to contribute the current statutory rate, which is thirteen point one percent on the first twenty-five thousand dollars of earnings, they pay that retiree, and then it goes to thirty percent on anything above twenty-five thousand dollars. And it's only uncovered positions and not on non-covered positions, and it, not to get too down in the weeds, but that little box there, the bottom of the slide there on ten, a non-covered position if it's seasonal and temporary, or if they expect them to work less than six hundred and thirty hours during the school year. Now, and of course, so there's assessment thirteen percent first twenty-five thousand, thirty percent on anything over twenty-five thousand. The, and it's really an employer assessment, but some of you may know, some of the districts then, because as they hire a retiree, it's a individual contract or individual discussion, a salary discussion. And so some of the employers, some of the school districts have then lowered what they would have paid that position to cover the cost of these additional Capers assessments. And so I don't know if you think the employee, the retiree is indirectly paying for that, but ultimately, technically, it still comes from the employer. Employer contributions were included in that working after retirement, all these provisions to help offset the actuarial cost of the system. Again, it's difficult to guess because it's a behavioral thing. If a person retires earlier than they would have otherwise or not, but at the time when the legislature agreed this, set this, these provisions up, the hope was that that ultimate thirty percent contribution rate would be, was kind of the best guess to try to make working after retirement as humanly possible, actuarially neutral, so there's no, no cost to the system. And I just point out again, there at the bottom of slide eleven, substitute teachers without a contract are exempt from employer contributions, but the waiting period still applies, and I guess that's the point. That waiting period, the sixty days or a hundred and eighty days, applies to everybody. So any retiree, school, non-school, if they're gonna return back to a Capers participating employer, they've got to have that either sixty-day waiting period or a hundred and eighty-day waiting period. And of course, then as I mentioned, substitutes with a contract are subject to the employer contributions. Substitute teachers without a contract, those daily call substitutes are exempt, but again, that waiting, waiting period still applies. So what, what has been the experience since the legislature made these adjustments in twenty eighteen? Clearly, it's been way easier for employers, for members, and for Capers to navigate and try to get everybody to understand what they are. And so I think that's, that's been a plus. There have been about five thousand five hundred retirees that were reported to Capers as returned to work in that last actuarial valuation. Of course, they don't report those daily call substitutes since, since they're not subject to it because of those exemptions. But out of that five thousand five hundred retirees, about schools reported hiring back about thirty-seven hundred retirees as returned to work in that last valuation, so about sixty-seven percent of the retirees that have come back to work are on the school side. And unfortunately, we don't collect position-specific information, so we can't say exactly how many of those are teachers. We just know that there, that thirty-seven hundred of those retirees are employed by a school employer. There have been more than eighty-five hundred retirements from the school group since twenty eighteen, so if you go back to the start of these new procedures. And of course, since the COVID pandemic, retirements from the school district have increased. If you look just at fiscal year twenty-one compared to fiscal year twenty twenty, there were about a little over thirty-one hundred and fifty retirements on the school side compared to a little over twenty-eight hundred the prior year. So that's an increase of over three hundred and thirty retirements, about twelve, twelve percent. And then as we drill down a little bit more, of the thirty-four hundred retirees, about of the retirees that were younger than sixty-two, that were younger than 62, 3,400 were subject to that. 62 and subject to the 180-day waiting period. And so in any given month, there's between about 400 and 1,000. As you'd expect, probably June's a high-volume month for retirements. And so there's anywhere between 400 and 1,000 CAPERS retirees in their waiting period. And then on Slide 14 is kind of this busy graph that looks at working after retirement. So the gold bars are those that are out of their waiting period. The purple graph is how many have returned to work. So if you just look in that very last bar, 8,754 as of last December. So 7,840 were out in the waiting period. 191 returned to work. 164 are in the 60-day waiting period. And then 559 are in that 180-day waiting period. So they're less than age 62. And again, you see the little bump up in June of each month, of course, is one of the prime months for school members to retire. So you can see kind of the, of the working after retirement experience here as we look since 2018. Of course, the vast number are out of the waiting period. But there is probably that 400 to 1,000 each month that are in some type of waiting period. So that is a quick stroll through working after retirement, or hopefully it was quick for you and not too painful. But just remember, working after retirement, there can be no prearrangement. And there's really kind of two parts. There's that waiting period, 60 days, 180 days, depending on the individual. And then there's the second part of that, then the employer contributions. Statutory amount for the first $25,000 paid to the retiree, currently at 13.1%, and then it goes to 30% after that. So that's kind of where we are in working after retirement. I know at CAPERS, we certainly get a lot of questions about working after retirement. I know I've heard from some of the school superintendents and personnel where it's, I mean, particularly during the COVID time, it's been really challenging as they're trying to staff, you know, and they know this retiree that just retired, you know, a month ago. And, you know, it fit that. And the poor district's scrambling to fill that, get a person in the classroom. And I guess I don't need to tell you that. And so anyway, so certainly, there's some challenges. I think the current system is simpler and clearer than the prior system. But of course, it's set by the legislature. And if you all in your world are dealing with working after retirements, I did bring over, and it's out on our website, but there's a one-page flyer on working after retirement for members and a one-page summary for employers or for school districts. And I've left them, I think, over there if you need any more paper. But anyway, certainly appreciate the time and the opportunity that the commissioner has extended here today to visit with you and certainly be pleased to respond to any questions if you have any.
I'm, by the way, one of those retirees that have no intention of working after retirement. Couple of questions. We get calls all the time that says if we didn't have the waiting period, we'd solve our substitute problem. Well, there's not that many. Is there any, the waiting period, is that determined by the CAPERS board or is that statutory?
It's statutory, so the legislature sets it.
Okay, so the CAPERS board would have no...
Yeah, correct, yeah.
Is there any current legislation addressing any of that? Because we get called all the time.
There have been, just recently, in the last few days, a couple bills related to working after retirement. I believe both of them address the assessment side. So that 30% or the statutory...
By the way, as a superintendent, I call that a penalty.
That's the term we usually hear from our school friends. Yes, that's right. So, but there's no bills currently in the legislature to shorten the waiting period that I'm aware of.
Thank you. Michelle, we have several questions.
Thank you, Chairman Porter. And this may not, hopefully this clarifies some questions for me. If you're recently retired, and maybe it's been 15 days, 20 days, and then you decide to move down to Arkansas, Missouri, Oklahoma nearby, and the school district's like down there, hey, would you like to come out of retirement and start working for us? And you moved to a new state and you said it's statutory. So it's based on our statutory. So they could pick that, they could pick up that employee. Does IRS follow them or not?
No, that's right, because it'd be for a different employer. It'd be a different system. So the IRS wouldn't have any problem with that, I don't believe, if they were hired by a school district in another state.
So a bordering state could just pick them up and they don't have to wait 180 days?
That's correct.
They could go right to work?
Yep, that's what I believe, yeah.
Thank you. Anne?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Alan, is it still 85 points or is it more like 95 now? I can't remember.
95 points for the CAPERS I members. So that's age and years of service. If you get to 85 points, you can have a normal retirement. And that'd be for people who joined CAPERS before 2009. Most of it, most people in CAPERS II and CAPERS III, it's either age 60 with 30 years or age 62 with 10 years or 65 with one year. But so you still have to meet that age requirement of 65 or 62 to be eligible to retire. And then you have to have the service to go along with that. Under the old, that 85-point plan, it was just whenever your age and years of service got you to 85, you were eligible for normal retirement. Members do have the opportunity for early retirement, most as early as 55. But of course, there's quite a bit of actuarial reduction the earlier a person goes out.
Okay. And I was thinking, the new employees after, well, whatever, CAPERS II or III, they move to a cash balance plan, is that right?
That's correct. CAPERS III, members 2015 and after, it's a cash balance plan. It's kind of a hybrid, has some attributes of the old defined benefit plan, some attributes of like a 401K. Contributions are the same, retirement eligibility is the same. But rather than that benefit formula that kind of the traditional defined benefit, age, final average salary, and the multiplier, on the cash balance plan, then it's more like a 401K. Because whatever the members put in, whatever the employer has put in, then that lump sum, whatever that is, is then annuitized and converted into a lifetime benefit. They can never lose what they put in, and they're guaranteed at least 4% interest on what they put in.
Which works better for people moving, changing careers and that kind of stuff. Well, does the state actually put a match in with that 401K then?
It does. On the cash balance plan, they start out at 3%. Members contributing 6. And then the longer it goes, I think it's over 24 years, they get up to 6%. So they're called pay credits, but it's what the employer puts in. Starts out at 3, gets to, after a fair amount of service by the individual, it gets up to 6% for the employer.
Okay. And those 30, I just want, were those 3,700 retirees that returned to work, were those in covered positions?
Yes, because they'd be reported positions, yes.
All right, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Janet?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First of all, thank you so much, because we have gotten lots of calls on this, you know, as several have said. I think I understand, because you throw us a lot of information, and I'm going to take some of your flyers. But if they go to another state, that doesn't count.
That's right.
And they could do whatever they want to tomorrow or even make prearrangements?
That's right, yep.
What about if they go to a company, I mean, a non-educational group?
Yeah, that's right. Again, same thing. There's no waiting period, there's no assessment by the employer. They can get their full CAPERS benefit and do whatever they want.
And no problem with IRS either?
That's right, that's right, yep.
Thank you.
Well, we thank you for being here.
My pleasure. Good luck navigating working after retirement.
See, we weren't too rough on you, were we?
The commissioner promised that part.
He didn't tell us, so we, he just knew we were really wonderful people. So thank you so much. Okay, now we have a work session. Probably sometime in the middle of this, we'll take a break.
Haley, are you able to see the PowerPoint? Haley, are you able to see the PowerPoint? Great. Well, good morning. I just thought, as you listen to Alan go over CAPERS, because I know how, how many phone calls you get and emails and texts around that. We must have whipped you pretty hard yesterday, because you're a little subdued this morning. We did a lot yesterday, right? We had a lot of celebration, student success, and then really good information around reading and dyslexia and a lot. So we want to engage you this morning, but we want you to maybe just take a little bit of relaxation and just think, you know, a little bit more broadly and not have to really, hey, what was that? What was that term they use on that phonemic awareness? What, you know, or trying to understand maybe the Baser-Linwood project or any of that. So Brad's going to, I think, join us in a few minutes and be here. But we have Haley Steinloggi, who is one of our researchers and one of the lead researchers on this project. And Haley's going to be jumping in to explain the research and then also to help answer questions. So here's kind of the format. I'm going to spend some time going over a little bit what we did, why we did what we did. Haley's going to interject. And then we're going to have some discussion. So literally, we'll be a shoulder partner, Anne, maybe with Ben. And just in case Anne and Ben in the first discussion decide we don't like each other anymore, then maybe the next one, it might be Ben and Betty. And the next, as we go through. And we'll just have an opportunity to discuss with a couple of people. And Mark, if you don't mind, we'd like to use you in that thought process because it'll just make my math easier as I try to coordinate and not have to rearrange the whole board table. So that's all.
You may have talked to me, Mark, sorry.
That's okay. You know, last night at dinner, for those of you that could go, we had, you know, a lovely time celebrating Brad. And thank you for doing that. And we spent some time yesterday talking about this vision and what it means. This vision, those statements, and those other documents that I went over with you yesterday are direct response to the work that was done in 2015. It took the board latter part of '15, '16, and even a little bit early into '17. So to develop all of those documents. But that was the outgrowth. Because Janet and some others will remember, we were in a period in 2015 that I would liken to 2021 or 2020, 2021 in this aspect. There was a lot of despair around education in 2015. It was mostly around funding of schools. That was the topic. Today, it could be, you know, COVID or what's happening. But it was funding of schools. And so the state board said, listen, we got an idea. Why don't you go out across the state and let's engage people and really start to have a robust discussion about education, not just about funding, but what should we want in our education system? So Brad and I designed 20 locations, which we thought was a lot. We really thought 20 locations. You've heard this story a lot. We went to 20 locations to ask three questions that we'll go over. Came back, though, and when we asked people, Ben came, Ben, who do you represent? And Ben could say, I'm a teacher or I'm a community member. Self-described, we had very little business participation. I went to the Kansas Chamber, and Mike O'Neill was the executive director at the time, and said, can you help us? And we went, Brad and I went back out before we presented the data to you all. And that was seven locations. So 27, this map represents 27. Those other seven, though, were chamber-sponsored events in Lawrence or, and I'm forgetting, Wichita, Manhattan. Yeah, I'm just trying to think where we went on those, Brad. And those were business people. And so then that combined represented about 2,000 people in those 27 locations. This is the kind of the history. And as I mentioned, we asked three questions. One of those questions, this board has never used in any of its work, but maybe this much. It was the third question. The first question was, when you think of a successful 24-year-old Kansan, and the remarkable scientific study of this, Melanie, we picked it out of the air. We thought, well, 24 is about the time you would finish your formal schooling and be starting your career. So there was nothing magical about the age we picked. We could have picked 30. But we were just trying to think of a young Kansan starting their career. That was what we wanted in mind. So we asked everyone that came, when you think of a young, young, successful Kansan, 24-year-old living in our state, what are the skill sets, the characteristics and the attributes that you have in your mind that describes that person? When you think about that and you're describing what that person is, what are the skill sets, characteristics and attributes? That was question number one. Question number two was, when you think of that person, what is K-12's role in developing that person? What should we do to develop that person you just described? And the third question that we haven't done much with, what should higher ed do? Because we turned that over to the Board of Regents. To the question number one, what are the skill sets, characteristics and attributes of a successful 24-year-old Kansan? 70% of the general population of the responses said non-academic skills are what make up success. 23% of those responses were academic skills. And then you could see, oh, we think successful people are healthy, physically and mentally. 2% said they have a piece of paper. And 2% said they're gainfully employed. Those were the results of the 2,000 responses from the general public. The business sector, from big companies like Spirit, Goodyear, Black and Beach, to mom-and-pop shops, said this. So you see this graph, you've seen this graph 100 times. 81% of the businesses said that. Or 81% of what responses from business people were non-academic, and 70% of the general public. So that was question one. And it became this, all right, so what are we supposed to do about this? Because I can tell you, Brad and I thought that what we would hear from the business people would be, can they just count back change? I'm sick and tired, the kids can't count back change. Right? Because that was kind of, was in our mind in '15, right, Brad? I mean, and they rarely said that. They said things like, they don't know how to show up on time. They don't know how to give customer service. They don't pull up their pants. They're rude to people. They care more about a paycheck than actually working. They're on their phone all day. I'm just giving you some example. And they were, they were kind of heated about it. But we talked about that. That was question number one. Question number two, what should schools do, if anything, to develop these kids? Maybe it's parents. We don't, right? What should schools do, if anything? That was question... That was question number two. This is the summary of what they said. Early childhood mattered, they said. If we could get started earlier and work with parents earlier, and we would like to fund all-day kindergarten, because that was not being done in 15. They never said public schools should run pre-K. They never said that. They said communities ought to decide how to engage parents in making sure that, well, you heard yesterday, right, that this early development from birth to age five is done appropriately. Craig Correll talked to you about what they do in Coffeyville, which could be much different than what they do in Shawnee Mission. They were, they were somewhat agnostic to how it came about, just that too many kids arrive at kindergarten, not knowing their colors, not knowing their, you know, any letters, not being read to, running out in the street because they've never been around people. So they said, we, we've got to address that. Another big item that came out of that second question was, why do you treat kids that want to be a plumber like a second-class citizen, and only kids that go to four-year college seem to matter to you guys? That every kid's path ought to be honored. Electricians, plumbers, skilled labor ought to be honored with the same intensity as a four-year college graduate. And we heard over and over, your system is set up to reward the college kid that wanted to go to KU and not these other kids. Third thing, please hire us more counselors and social workers and allow them to work with kids that have, need help, suicide, mental health, career guidance. Our counselors are just doing schedules, they're just, they're just doing, but we need more. They also said, we've got to collaborate stronger with business. So you think about our work-based learning initiative, or we have them out in business, that's what they were talking about. And, and families, so deeper collaboration. I'm gonna leave that purple one to the last, because they, Kansan said, community service needs to play a bigger role in students' lives. We, we were a little surprised by the intensity of that. Maybe, and we thought, well, maybe, is that a Midwestern thing? Is that a Kansas thing? But they were, that, that was a major component. You saw that again yesterday with the Baser-Linwood kids, right? In that, they talked, that was a civic engagement project, along with English and mathematics and a CTE component, and, you know, all the skills, but that was a community service type of project. And then the purple one, which is the big outfit in the room. If these weren't big enough, you need to reorganize schools around the kids and the families, not around the school. So don't make kids go down all these same paths, taking the same courses. You need to reorganize them around the student. And thus redesign was born out of that, but you can see how difficult that is when you're changing a system. But that was question number two. Those were the summaries from question number two, all in 2015. Well, Brad and I thought, you know, 2020, 19, actually it was 19, we ought to go back out. COVID. So we couldn't go out. So we waited until 20, the summer of 2020. And we went now out to the success tour. We wanted to talk about three things. One, what has happened since 15? So we talked about post-secondary success, of which we had seen a tremendous increase, graduation rates, which we'd seen tremendous increase, some of the metrics that hadn't moved quite as much, we want to talk about that. And then we wanted to talk about what has changed, if anything, since 15 in your mind? All right, as you know, now, we thought that 20 was weak, you know? Betty might have said, you didn't do enough, Randy, you need to get, step up the game. All right, let's do this. So we went to 50. And we had, you'll see, we had well over 3,500 participants in the 50 sessions. So we did up to 14 a week, and we were, we then looked at this data with three different lenses from three different research entities. So R12 Comprehensive Center, which is out of McRel in Denver, Colorado, Kansas State University, and Haley and our researchers here. And they looked at all this data independently, because we, we, we always wanted to say this, well, and you'll hear me, you'll hear this said. Patrick Woods, many of you know Patrick, he's been a great supporter. He said the other time, you know, not too long ago to me, you know, the commissioner's vision, this is not my vision. This is not my data. This is Kansas data. I'm just reporting, similar to how Alan kind of gave you the status of how Capers arrived, I'm telling you, this is what Kansans said, which I think is impactful. It's not, well, Randy. And so we wanted three different research groups to look at it and say, what did you find when we did this? So here are the demographics. Statewide participation, we want to know who attended, that's critical. How do they feel about these skills that we set in 15 and the strategies that schools are doing to produce those adults? And then we ask second question about what do they need, which is this qualitative finding, what support do schools need to provide this work? There'll be five common themes that Haley and I will talk about. So, how many people? 3,455 responses. By the way, the 2015, Kansas State said, this is the largest qualitative study ever done on K-12 education in the history of our state. Well, we increased that by 50%. So we, we have 50% more responses than we did in 15. Most of that was done online, but we had a paper pencil version. And by the way, this is what's really important. Every single person that attended a session, their responses were recorded. So it wasn't, we went to a room, and anyone have any questions? And you know how that goes, right? A few people have questions, you never know what the rest of people are thinking, because Michelle may not have decided to ask questions, we never know. We asked every person to give input back, and if they said, I don't know how to use technology, you know, we gave them a piece of paper and they could record it. We did 50 in-person sessions, and we did one online. So we actually did 51 across the state. And we took this. So you say, all right, where do these Kansas Can competencies come from? Where did this wheel of this interpersonal, interpersonal cognitive skills come from? These are the skills as described here. In the 70% and the 23% combined, not the healthy, but the 93, what were they? These. Does that make sense? And that, now we're, we're drilling down. We're saying, problem solving was talked about, content knowledge was talked about, self-care was talked about, teamwork was those, and that Kansan said, it's the skills and combination that we want. So when we went out, then, just this past year, we said, okay, are these still the skills? So that's where they came from. Are these still the skills? So we asked the question, are the skills represented there still what you think make up success? 93% of almost 3,500 participants strongly agreed or agreed on a five-point scale, a four or five. 5% rated it a three. They said, I don't know, maybe, maybe not. 2% said, are you stupid? No. Now, sometimes I feel like, when I'm in other places, that people say, you're not listening to me. Well, we listened to everyone, everyone got a voice. And 2% don't like the direction, don't like those. 93% do. That's just, I'm just giving you the data. Then we ask, as you know, the second question, which was, what about the strategies? 89% yes, 5% three, and 3% said no on the strategies, which are these. Don't like that redesign, don't like all-day kindergarten, don't, I don't know, right? I, I don't like that. But 89% said yes. We strongly agree with the actions that were done or the direction we want to go. So, right off the bat, the first two questions, 93% agreement on the 15 data on the wheel, and 89% agreement, strong or agree on the strategies. Okay? So what the researchers said, all three research groups collectively said, across the state, Kansans overwhelmingly agree that we are prioritizing the right skills and we're prioritizing the right strategies to produce successful high school students and adults. By the way, there was no door shut. We advertised for, Peggy, how long did we advertise before we went out? Do you remember? We, we, we advertised across the state, we sent out, we, we went to the Kansas Chamber, we went to local chambers, we did radio ads, Brad and I did TV, we did local newspaper, we, we, we did everything. No door was shut, meaning you came, you got input. And again, 50 places and one online. Across the state, Kansans overwhelmingly agree that we are prioritizing the right skills and the strategies to produce successful high school students and adults. 93%, 89%. Then the second, well, there were two questions there. Then the third question, what support do schools need to accomplish the change that you're talking about doing? That you saw yesterday, you heard from Nima House Central, right, how they do IPS. What support do you need? This was open-ended. So the other was a Likert scale, right? Do you agree? Open-ended. So we had 2,800 people wrote whatever they thought. So some of the 3,500 didn't respond. They could have, they just chose not to. Data was examined again by the three research groups, and guess what? Those research groups independently reached consensus over three, in the three groups with five overriding principles. And here they are. And we're gonna spend most of the bulk of today just talking about this. Even though, when we get questions, you can certainly ask Haley or myself or Brad questions around the first part, but it's a little more simple, because if we went, Jean could have written something very different than what Janet may have written, and then our researchers had to make sense out of what were they saying. So the five themes, the researchers agreed centered around educator-centered supports, commu-, uh, system-wide needs, to enhance student learning and success, leadership and policy, and community relations and engagement. So as we go forward, we'll be talking now about this data in conjunction with the 15 data, what do Kansans want to see? All right? So let's delve now into these and start having some discussion. Let's, let me back up before I do that. Brad, what have I left out about the history of this getting to where we are today?
Thank you, Derek. Great.
It's a part-timer. We call him part-timer, Brad, now, right now.
Well, they got a comfy chair there.
And Haley's, Haley's ready to go. So we're gonna spend a lot of time now in discussion around this, because we want you to fully understand what the data said. So Ben, when someone says to you, because this happens to me, I go to, I go to a hearing, Dean, I know this never happens to you, but I go to a hearing across the street, and there's zero, there's zero people that are proponents for it, or there's no one from Kansas in support of it. This is all Kansas data. Michelle asked, can I go to Missouri and get a job with Alan? This isn't Missouri. I mean, maybe. I guess, I guess if they would have snuck across the border somewhere, you know, when we were down in southeast Kansas from Oklahoma or somewhere, and infiltrated us. This is, these are what Kansans thought. All right. So let's start with community relations and engagement. Here's the statement from the researchers. They said, we saw a lot of responses that said, you need to provide opportunities for community engagement. Community engagement. Michelle, Melanie, Janet, in your region, northeast Kansas, we have seen some parents not very happy with the engagement that they want to have. Is that correct? So our researcher said they want opportunities for community engagement. We've heard from some parents say, I can't talk to our school board. They don't answer me. Engage your community and support for schools to enhance opportunities. And then there's some bullet points we'll walk through. Communications with family. In 15, we actually even called that engagement, which is a different than a one-way communication. Partnerships with business, collaborations between districts, that's something new that came out, and involvement from the community. Now, we're gonna have discussion and then Q and A, but I want Haley now to talk about what she saw as the researcher and explain how they put this together, and also give you some quotes that will give you a, kind of a sample of how they apply this and put that into this area. So Haley, I'm gonna turn it over to you.
Thank you. Um, so I'm gonna just back up real quick and just describe what our collaborative process was like with K-State and the Region 12 Comprehensive Center. We've really focused on this qualitative data, and as Commissioner Watson said, it was independently reviewed. So each of our groups took these open-ended responses and developed our own content analysis. So we categorized things into different themes and sub-themes. And then throughout November and December, we got together, reported back our results and our findings, our own organization of the data, and what we did through our collaborative processes, develop these five themes and the unique descriptions within each of them. So for this slide here, community relations and engagement, there are four sub-themes here, communication, partnerships, collaboration, and involvement. And you'll see these kind of bulleted in the following slides with the remaining four themes. And things that stood out to me for this, this theme were the partnerships with businesses. This was a really common response, that interest in work-based learning opportunities, real-world experiences for students. That was a very common response that we saw. And then communication with families. What are ways that we can describe to the community, describe to families what's going on in schools and why we're making some of the changes that we're making? And then collaboration across districts. Dr. Watson mentioned this was a new one. And districts and respondents really want to see success stories. What are other districts doing that we can learn from? How do we collaborate with them to meet the Kansas vision? So I'll share some quotes as well that would fit within this theme, so you can kind of get an idea of what respondents actually said and how that relates to the development of this theme. So one quote would be, more communication out to parents, businesses, and others in the community on how to partner with the school. Another would be, schools alone won't have the resources or time to do this alone. More partnerships with business, industry, higher ed, community organizations, et cetera. All these entities want the same general results, let's focus on bringing more players to the table. And then another example might be, we need, we need support to help families understand what school is teaching so that they can reinforce it in the home. And then a last example of a quote from a respondent would be, networking with districts that have found success in these principles. So you can also see kind of through those quotes, the variety and the detail that respondents provided, and you'll see that in some of the other quotes as well as we go through the rest of the themes.
Thank you, Haley. So I'm gonna leave this up, and now- And now what we like to do, which is what we did on the fifty-city tour, and I want to go through that process again because it was very intentional. So, we did a short presentation, Brad and I did, a little bit shorter than this. And then we had them in small groups and said, "Now, discuss this." We did that for about ten or fifteen minutes. And then we said, "Give us your thoughts now individually." Here's the reason that we did that. So, give me kind of the teacher mode in me. You want to present the information, but then some people, and then we like to hear other people's thought process because some people, not all, process better when they hear other people's thoughts. Other people, nope, that messes them up. Some people like that. So, we want to have conversation. And then we wanted to capture everyone's individual thoughts so that we had that. That's the process. So, what we're going to do right now is kind of what we call shoulder buddies. In this case, I'm starting from my right. So, Ann and Ben, Betty and Janet, Jim and Mark, Michelle and Dina, and Melanie and Jean. Spend a few minutes talking about what Kansans said in this, what questions you have for myself, Brad, or Haley, what clarification, and maybe what you hear also from people around this area. Does that make sense? And then we'll, we'll do another one. Then maybe, Mr. Porter, we take a break and then come back and do the other two or three, and then see where you want to go at the end.
Let me ask one question. Are we going to have time sometime near the end of this just to have a general discussion?
Yes. Yes, yes. Okay? All right. Go ahead.
Typically, it's just...
Okay. Yes, Melanie?
I don't have a question, but more of a comment, especially since Haley's listening. That is, Jean and I were talking about the families component. There was a piece of me that was wondering if we, it would be so nice if we knew more about the respondents when we were talking about families. Because one thing that we do here is you have some families that are very engaged. You have other families who are very busy and are putting a lot of trust in the schools and saying, "You guys handle it. I got this thing going on over there." And I know that that's not part of the data we collected, but that's definitely a question that's lingering in my mind, is how are we defining families and their level of engagement and their ability to engage, so.
Yeah, thank, thank you for that. Were you able to hear that, Haley? Okay, good. We do not know, we, we do know how many parents came. We don't know the level of engagement. Assume that they're fairly engaged because they came, but that's an assumption, right? I don't know if Haley wants to, you know, our researchers, you know, when I say things, they, they cringe like, "You can't say that," right? I mean, the, the research, so I'm, I'm always gonna look to her. But we did not capture, you know, what type of parent, because we do know this, right? If we think about during the COVID time, I think Anne has mentioned this in, in her area, Scoop pretty good, huh? I'm not gonna, is if you look at who showed up at board meetings, the suburb, so Topeka Seaman, for example, had many more people than Topeka 501. So it was a different, right? I mean, they may have thought about that issue differently. So we don't, and we don't know, you know, to the differentiation between any, any group of parents, that is true. Yes, Mark?
So you put a lot of thought and energy into gathering all that.
Make sure you're on so Haley can.
You put a lot of thought and energy into how to gather that and to reach another, you know, number of constituencies in terms of advertising. What can you do that doesn't mess up your, your data collection to continue to get, gather that input after you start communicating, communicating? Cause some people will wake up to it and wanna, wanna share their thoughts now.
So Mark's question is then what's the ongoing process for collecting feedback as we go? Don't know that we've thought through that yet, Mark, because I think right now we're presenting these, this set of data to, to all the state board, and then the state board will probably determine what's the next course of action. If you think back to 15, what we did, we specifically went out with that, that wheel, and every time, well, I don't know every time, but most of the times Brad and I went out, we said, "Pick one of the, pick of the skill you think are most important." We had over 10,000 responses, and the top one was perseverance, for example, Mark. So we'll have to have a feedback loop of how we continue this process. I would encourage you though to also think about at some point in the future, no more than five years, maybe as short as three, you'll want to get this data again, right? I mean, you'll wanna do it again. Maybe not with me doing 50 of these unless, Betty, unless you're gonna go with me on that, cause Brad told me no. So, thank you though for that comment. Yeah, Betty?
I think the thing that really sticks in my mind, and I hope this is in line with where we're going, when we look at those four points, and let's start with the first, communication with families. Communication can be different things to different people. As an example, you have a school that, parent teacher conference, we have 95% of the people coming. They may think they're communicating with families. But what does that communication really mean? I feel as though if I am talking to you and sharing my thoughts with you, I'm communicating. But from the perspective of the families, what do you know, as an example, after that conference, what do you know about the family part of it coming out compared to what you knew starting it? Communication, what does that mean to you? Now, most of the time, what I am hearing is, I hear them, but they don't hear me. And so when we look at those, those points, I think the significance is to make sure that not only families are, "I hear what you're saying," because to me, you can be patronized in that sense, "Oh yeah, I hear you." Now what kind of change has occurred? You hear me, do you understand what has occurred? So from our perspective, as we were talking about those, those points, those aren't new. There's nothing innovative about what we have up here. That's been said for I don't know how many years. I know I was saying that when my kids were in school, I was saying it when I was in school, but the point is, those are not new. And if we still have the same, I'm gonna say four valid points, 20 years, then maybe we need to be looking at something else. Maybe we need to look at how are we engaging these? What kinds of changes have we made from a family structure to where families feel respected? When I served on the local board, one of the things that we really tried to impress when families come to school, how, how are they treated? How are they respected? Starting with, from the clerk or receptionist, all the way through, how are they treated? How are they respected? And when you come in with a concern, instead of me saying, "Well, we've done this, this, and that's resolved," how much time do we really feel the same way when we say communication can be a partnership? And it is a collaboration, and it is an involvement. What are we doing to change and incorporate this? Cause it doesn't do any good if we sit around and we talk about these things and we have done nothing to, and I think I'm getting on my soapbox, so I better climb down, but if we've not done anything to effectively engage that. So, you know, I, I think we would like to see maybe something a little different.
So, thank you, Betty, and, and so, this is what they said. What you will do, I hope, and what we will do on your behalf, is then develop the processes and help people execute to the level that you wanna see this done. Cause I think what Betty is saying is, if we don't specifically talk to them how to engage and communicate, that word can mean so many different things that we're not getting how you want to see that done. I think that's really valid. Anne?
Yeah, thank you. And I think what Betty said right at the tail end is the key. It's engagement, not just communication. And Ben and I talked about that, a lot of times, a local district communicates one way, but there's no engagement. It's like, here's what we're gonna do. Like we were talking about, he noted that on some of these bond issues, when it said, "Did you have a community discussion or whatever?" Several of them said, "No." Okay, so, you know, we're gonna put this bond issue before, you know, wonder they get voted down, you know, that kinda thing. But the other thing I was thinking about was, sometimes we do these cool reports and then we put them in a box and nobody knows about it. Like the one on, remember we did the teacher licensure and retention blue ribbon report? And the committee, the group came out, the task force, with things for us to do, things for the legislature to do, things for the local boards to do. And we tackled ours, and we went across the street and got some, you know, got them to act on some of theirs. But when I would go to speak to local boards and I would say, and they would say, "What are you guys doing about getting more teachers?" And I'd go, "Well, here's the report, here's what we did. Have you guys done anything with the recommendations for local boards?" And they wouldn't even know there were any recommendations for local boards to solve the problem. So I don't want that same thing to happen here. Obviously, many of these things are things that local districts have to do. We can work with like collaboration across districts, but the local boards and administrations have to do that communication. That's where it has to take place.
I remember a former state board member who may have been seated over on this side, used to say to me and get really angry when a patron would call him because they could not find the phone number of the local board on the school district website. He said, "Now, my address and my phone number is right there, why can't we..." Which was part of that, right, Anne? "I oughta be able to find..." And he would say to me, "What are we gonna do about that?" Well, we have, we have some bully pulpit, right? We have some guidance, but there's some, you know, we can't force things, but, but we could be giving specific guidance out. I think that's what you may have said. Sometimes you can't find who the superintendent is.
Let's take a break.
Okay, alright.
Just about seven, eight minutes, and let's get back.
Alright.
Recruiting high qualified educators. Some of the quotes that would fit within this theme. K S D college preparation programs need to be revised to complement the K S D E vision. Another is simply trust in professional educators. A third would be good salaries for all educators to retain them. And that was something that was al- almost always paired with those comments is that if you can increase pay for educators, you can hire higher quality staff members. And another quote would be professional development on strategies to reach students in special populations, English language learners, and students with I E Ps. So those are just a couple examples of how the the kinds of responses that would fit within this theme.
I don't know if we heard, as Haley said, a fairly intense in this area because of the COVID period that we were doing this in. Whether that intensified it or not, again, that's one of those things we just won't know. But certainly by doing this in 2020, still in the middle of that, that that has to be taken into consideration. So now we're going to go from my left, starting with Melanie. So Melanie and Deana, Michelle and Mark, Jim and Janet, Betty and Ben, and Anne and Jean. So one of you, and I'm going to ask Brad to give up his chair. So whoever wants to move will roll the chair up and spend five minutes having a discussion around this topic. Thank you for that conversation. I know these are short, but we're going to do some general too, whenever we get to the end. So any clarifying questions about what was said in this that, again, we can answer? Before we get into a few of the comments that maybe you want to share out. Deana?
Well, we were talking about autonomy in the classroom and exactly what that was referencing.
Haley, can you help on that? See, we're really putting you on the spot now. We're asking the details of of it.
You might have to say it again. I had a difficult time hearing.
Autonomy in the classroom. What were you referencing by autonomy?
So that was autonomy in the classroom. One of the examples, just trusting professional educators. And we chose the word autonomy because there was a lot of responses that said, you know, we're educators, we are in the classroom. We want the freedom, flexibility, and trust and support to make the right decisions for our students. So that's why we we chose that word autonomy. We know that educators have some, you know, things that they have to do, things that they have to follow, and they certainly are. But they want the freedom to kind of make the decisions for their students that they think is best.
So helpful, Deana, and clarification. Any other questions clarifying? Anne?
I know the districts have to submit a plan for professional development, right? But I'm wondering if part of what we recommend doesn't need to be more relevant? Because I know some have said, you know, what we used to do, they used to let me choose like half day what I wanted to work on. You know, I could do what I needed to do. Now it's all top down, everybody gets the same lesson. And they even made us sit through a half day on a science curriculum we don't use. So, you know, I think that one is really, really important. And we've put so much on their plate anyway. They certainly need to be working on some of those things.
It's a little tricky because you're right. We we hear that, and I'm sure Sheri would say that word relevant is the key word, right? Relevant is individual to that person. When you say things though, like we need to do a Jason Flat Act. Now everyone's going to do suicide. When you say every first grade teacher needs to be trained in the science of reading, now you're dictating that. So there's there's this pull, right? What is relevant to you may not be relevant to that. So the music teacher saying, well, what about me? Am I supposed to learn about reading? Right? You figure, I think you probably had that a lot as an art teacher, right, Deana? And so I think that's constantly for us to think about. General comments, Michelle, or you have a question?
Or just just a comment on that as far as the, I think the biggest thing as far as parents is asking, they they change a policy, they implement a new grading scale or whatever. It's giving the giving the teachers the why so that they can go back as far as literacy. Like, why are we changing this? The tell them the why, explain that, and make sure everybody understands that. So that when the parent asks, they they have, it's not like, policy change, or, you know, I have no idea. I'm still learning it myself. I mean, it's like, that doesn't look good to a parent. It was like, why are we changing this all of a sudden overnight? Or did this change overnight? Or where did this come from? Or why are we changing it? Because this was working for my kid, or whatever it was, or wasn't working. Or, you know, it has to be the why has to be explained. Policy change, leadership must make sure everybody understands the why. And then work through it. And then if they see that it doesn't work for that district, or that's building, or that school, we might have to read, we might have to look back at that policy. Don't just keep it there forever just because we changed it, so.
So let me play that out in real world example. You heard yesterday some very passionate people about reading. Would you agree? Knowledgeable and passionate. And you have a, hey, science of reading ought to be taught. So we're doing that, fifteen million dollars in training. So the teacher goes to parent teacher conference and Michelle's sitting there. What's all this changed about reading? State mandated it. Right? That's the answer. Now, we don't know. We don't have any other explanation, which is then the parent goes, well, I don't understand why we would do this. Because that's the only communication they've heard. Go back to Betty, right? I haven't heard anything about this. And you can see right there, then it's all starts to fall apart. Because we haven't set enough time, not only in the why, but the people that communicate that's got to get that all the way down to parents. And then there's got to be a two way communication back. So that's easily how what you think is a good thing with the people that just were in front of you. But if Deana, the art teacher said, I don't need to think about that. And at conferences, why are we spending so much time on reading? My kid really loves art, Deana. State mandated it. And now that's the only part that that parent that whose kid really loves art hears. And then that becomes the narrative for at least that family. And you then then you get an email saying, why did you mandate this reading when we need more art? I'm making that up. But but that's kind of how it kind of comes full circle with something that seemed so easy. Very good comment. Thank you. Melanie?
I just want to piggyback on Anne's comment. Yes to everything that she said about PD. And then I asked a follow up question of Deana about, you know, how does that affect teacher retention? And so just want to get on record as saying, obviously, if we're doing a better job with PD, that's going to create a more hospitable environment for those teachers. So that's certainly something to take into consideration. But point well taken that everybody's got to understand why we're doing what we're doing if there is a policy change. And then to jump, we we made it to the topic of needing to know more about college prep programs. On that first bullet point around teacher prep programs, maybe that's something that we want to look into and how they're actually following the standards and whether there's opportunity there. So those are the biggies for us. And then kind of a closing question was, do we know that our educators are employing all of those things that we see on the competency wheel? We want it for our students. Are we seeing it from our teachers?
Excellent comments. You know, one of the hard things about a decentralized system, which is how we build education, is it's not run like Amazon. Right? I mean, it or McDonald's, right? I mean, generally, if I go to this McDonald's over here, or I go to one injunction city, or I go to one Garden City, I can get a Big Mac. Right? It's fairly standardized. But our education system is you present some guidelines, local boards do it. Teacher has a lot of autonomy to implement a lesson. And and then all that, there's good and bad to that, but but all that's. Yeah, Anne, and then I'll go to Betty. Go ahead, Anne.
Okay, thanks. Well, and I've got a real concern about that, too. I remember I'd been asking for a long time about, you know, this, these notes we've been getting from N C T Q saying, you know, you guys have some problems out there in your teacher prep programs. And then when they came to explain it, I felt like I kind of got dressed down for, oh, we're just fine. You know, why did you even ask the question? But I think there's enough noise and talk about it out there that there are some problems. And I thought, okay, if N C T Q doesn't have it right, then what are your answers for why they keep taking, you know, they're not passing at high rates the first time? What are your solutions? And we didn't hear any of that. So I think continuing to follow up on those programs is something we ought to do. I mean, I'm a big girl. I can take a dressing down, but I'll keep asking the question.
Thank you. Betty?
One of the things that really highlights in my mind, teachers, and it's really funny when we talk about education, it's almost like that's the only category that is significant, teachers. And teachers tend to be held responsible when it's failing. When I hear of people out campaigning for state education positions, it's always, we need better teachers. We need, and so those teachers that are in the the field that are giving their hearts, it impacts their morale. So where I'm going with all of this is one of the things that we have to look at is that is a profession that is valued, but do we really value it? And you can hear that when autonomy in the classroom, I was sharing with Ben, that in my session, I think it was more educators that that were present than represented than families. The thing that really concerns me or what stands out to me is maybe a teacher feels like autonomy is how I feel trusted or how I feel valued. And so there are things that they are reaching for when really that profession, if it's valued, we wouldn't be talking about better pay. You know, it's it's really ironic because I was talking about the amount of money that's paid to a basketball coach versus a superintendent or any other area versus a teacher. And if we really value teachers, it wouldn't even be a conversation about pay. If we really value what they're bringing to the table, that would not matter. And then teachers would feel valued. That may be the very reason that we are not seeing people migrate to that profession. It's a hard job. It has to be a heartfelt job. But you are not really valued. And in all of those, Eric, those points, that's something that stood out in my mind in my conversation with Ben. We need to hire more qualified staff. Well, what's that saying to the people that are working? You're not qualified? And if we are saying that and the public is listening, does that not say to them, you're, you don't support your workforce? You know, so inherent in all of that are just things that are interrelated that we can't isolate, but we have to talk about the whole picture in order to get an idea of what the picture is.
Thank you. I, you know, you talked about on that first slide, Betty, well, we've known this forever. Here's one thing I think I've known forever. Deana, help me with this. Phi Delta Capin has run a survey around, are your schools any good? I'm paraphrasing the question. I don't know, fifty years. And what generally parents say is, I'm not sure that it's been slipping. I don't know that schools are doing, but my school's great. Right? And I think about that. I said this to my daughter the other day because she posted something on social media about this topic. I don't feel valued. I said, by who? The social media or the parents that you serve? And then she, that stopped her for a second. Because I'm not so sure they're not, we're not getting some of this from this, not all. But some of this is a cycle of social media posts. It's, and it's not the parents that I'm actually certain. Now, sometimes that is, that isn't. And but she she stopped and just, she's thought about that. No, it was a social media post of not anyone remotely, even in her community. But it made her feel bad. And so she wanted to respond to that. And I often think about that Phi Delta Capin. No, schools aren't get, they're kind of getting worked, but my school's great. Well, that can't be, both those can't be true, right? If all schools are going bad, but my school's great. And maybe that's, maybe that's some of the things that we have to work with, just on this perception. Yes, Ben?
This hits on a lot of my, I don't want to say regular talking points, but in terms of, you know, our teacher prep programs, and I echo Melanie and Deana's conversation. And it's something that, because of something that occurred in my very first meeting here, I got very involved in right away is teacher prep programs and everything that goes into it. That, you know, we need to have a larger conversation about what those look like. I don't know that we've really changed what they have, what they look like. The dyslexia was the first big change they've had in decades, is my guess. And we've changed K twelve education, and we're in the process of changing it widely. But we haven't looked at our preparation to get teachers in the classroom. Now we're infusing S E L and civic engagement, all these into our lesson plans. But we still are stuck in what we've done twenty years ago. Not good or bad, but it's a real conversation about, you know, how does this meet? And then we got a presentation was a year ago from Bueller on their individualized professional development. I can't remember what the name of it was. The name escapes me. Yeah, micro credentialed. Thank you. In terms of that, where was individualized, you know, how how is that going? And we expect individual education for our students. Shouldn't we not expect individual education for educators, for their professional development? And I know that there's system wide, and it's been talked to before, there is system wide needs, Jason Flat Act, suicide awareness is district wide. There are certain targets with dyslexia where it targets certain populations of your staff, but not necessarily everybody, but it does a little bit. But there are content things. And and, you know, one of the challenges that we have is we talk about, we want college credit for our students, is with a higher learning commission mandating that you have a content mastery instead of what we typically do when they, is a pedagogical master's level to where their their master's degree doesn't count for them teaching college credit, which is an issue. And, you know, how do we merge the two? Because we seem to reward that for principalship, for pedagogical and that stuff versus the the content knowledge. And so there's a lot of pieces to it as how do we do that better? And I'll get off my soapbox.
Thank you. All right, we're going to go to the next question. System wide needs. So work to address system wide needs in order to support students and staff by increasing funding to enhance programs and instruction, offer pre K and increase salaries. Well, that's a lot to unpack in the first one. Hiring qualified teachers, paras, counselors, social workers, and allowing for reduced class size. A lot to unpack in the second one. And prioritizing the mental health and social emotional needs of staff and students. Haley, take, walk us through this area if you would, please.
What what I think is so interesting, once we get to the system wide needs theme, is that we start to really see the intersectionality of the subthemes and the larger themes themselves. And as some of you have already mentioned, all of these things kind of connect with each other. So as you might imagine, funding was a very common response. Some people just said, we need more funding. And others were more specific and provided lots of details on what that funding could be used for. And offering pre K focusing on early learning opportunities was a common response as well as just enhancing programs and instruction and individualized learning for students. And then, of course, increasing salaries. And then again, we see hiring qualified teachers. This is more focused on system wide, so not just educators, but paras, counselors, social workers, researchers, people to look at our data and help us implement new programs. And allowing for reduced class size, that was another common comment that we we saw. And then prioritizing mental health and social emotional needs for both staff and students. This came up quite a bit. And I would say there's a little bit more focus than I've seen in the past on the mental health of staff themselves. So some examples of quotes that would fit within these subthemes here would be funding free pre K for all, not just at risk, better pay for school employees, more mental health professionals. Another would be, we need people. In southwest Kansas, we are really struggling with a shortage of teachers. Systematic change can only occur if we have enough people to carry out the initiatives. And more support for social emotional stress for staff as well as for students. And then a final quote would be teachers, building aides, bus drivers, custodians, maintenance. We need applicants for our positions. Without good people, we are unable to do our jobs to the best of our abilities.
Thank you, Haley. Uh huh, Anne?
We talked at first, do we know, I know, I had the feeling because probably a lot of these were at schools and during the day. We had a lot higher percent of teachers and educators at these meetings than you guys did in 2015. Do we know what the mix was?
We do know what the mix was, and we did have a high proportion of educators. We also did in fifteen. We did three a day, and so we did always one at night. But there were, there was one in the morning, one in the afternoon, one in the evening. But we still had more educators, K twelve and higher ed than probably any other profession. Yes. I want to say this because this is so true. And there's so much, as Haley went through that, that perception and reality, no, perception is always reality. But the facts don't always indicate what perception is. Here's an example. We've never put more money into K twelve education than we are right now. Ever. The legislature is fully funding constitutionally K twelve education. In this, when they go to do their budgets in August, I'm going to get the number a little wrong, but over seventy school districts, seventy-five school districts will have less money than they did last year. Why is that? Declining enrollment. One of our good friends, Betty, Doug Meckle texted me just a while ago. What we're dealing with is we have, we have adaptive problems that we're looking for technical solutions. Give me more teachers, give me more pay, or my class size. We're declining in population in almost all hundred, not all, but many of our hundred and five counties. Who's not Riley, Douglas, Johnson, Miami? They're growing, right? But a lot are, you see that on Highway thirty-six, right, Deana? Over seventy school districts will have less money next year, and we are putting the most and we are putting the most ever in the history. That's number one. Number two, we have some of the lowest class sizes in the United States, primarily in our most rural districts. So Jim will know this and small rural. If I've got 20 kids, that local board's going, and parents, that's too many. We need to divide that up. We have a lot of classes with single digits. In Melanie's district, they would die for that in Shawnee Mission. But Shawnee Mission is not the standard of the 286. I can go in a lot of classrooms and there's eight kids. And I said, well, wouldn't, why wouldn't you combine the second and third grade together? You'd only have 16. Oh, no, no, no. We're proud of our low class size. And then we hear, we need, we need a lower for class size. Or we need to hire more teachers and we need to pay them more. I'm just telling you, we're trading out, we're trading out things. Shawnee Mission probably has class size easily in the elementaries of 25, maybe higher, which tall, pretty high too at times, right, Betty? So we're living two different worlds there. Betty?
I'm sorry, I, I keep saying this, but semantics really matter. Now, I'm going to take that second bullet point again. Hiring qualified teachers, pairs, counselors. Semantics to that is you've been hiring unqualified teachers, pairs, et cetera, et cetera. If I talk to an individual, private school versus public schools, rarely have I heard that these private schools have a bunch of unqualified teachers, and that's what their problem is. But if I were to look at public education, that you will hear, once again, I don't know if it's social media or if we've said it so long that now everybody believes it, that we have unqualified people. And I can't help but wonder if sometimes we're not creating that concept, which is minimizing or marginalizing public education because we focus on how unqualified everybody is. And that's not true. And so we're saying, this is bad, and it's not true. That's where the semantics come in, when you're saying qualified. What do you mean? And, and, and that's really significant because we are sending out a message to the public at large. And we've been saying this for so long that that's the go-to answer.
And I, I'm glad you bring that up because I never heard that in 50 locations. What I heard the teacher saying is, there, there's a shortage and we need more. So when they say, when I heard over and over, we need more qualified, what they were saying is, we don't need, we need more teachers to fill the classrooms, but don't lower the standard. Make sure they're qualified. Because I never, in 50 locations, and like Ann had mentioned, predominantly it was educators. And they weren't saying, the ones that we have are not. We need more of them and make sure they're qualified. Don't lower the standard. But if you read it or other people read it that way, we got to make sure we're clear that's what they were saying because we don't want the ones out there. Because the ones that we're speaking were educators speaking on behalf of all other, we don't want the other ones to hear what they were saying was that they're not. So I'm glad you brought that up.
And that's why I prefaced it by talking about semantics, what you're saying and how it's perceived. And when you hear just the general public, that's what I hear from the general public. We don't have, we don't have qualified people. And to be honest, I even feel like we have teachers that interpret it that same way. So yes, we have to focus on the semantics and what message that's sending out because that really is a negative message. And when we talk about community buying in, we've set up a, a reason for them not to buy in because this is what they're hearing. So yes, definitely, we have to be aware of the semantics and how we are repeating or saying our points.
Excellent. All right, we're going to go to small, yes, Michelle.
Real quick, as far as the classroom size and the parent needing more pairs, counselor, social workers, and then you're talking about, you might talk to a parent in a private school. If you have a, you have 25 kids in a classroom in a public school, you have one teacher, first semester, and seven to eight of those kids are on an IP. That teacher's going to need help. She's going to need, I mean, this is, this is stuff I witnessed over the course of the year. She, by the second semester, she's probably going to get two pairs, if not three. It's, the, 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 hopefully the system or the district's going to listen that this particular school at this particular time has to have a strong team at this school. We may need some pairs coming to transfer over or whatever. In a private school, how many of those kids need one-to-one are going to get that pair of help or need that in a, in a private school? I don't, I don't know those answers, but I'm just wondering because some of those children are, if they're gifted, if they're, they're going and they're busing to a public school during the middle of the day. I don't know if everybody knows that, but they're bused part of the day to a public school. And then in the, and, and then if they're, they're needing other services, they also get bused to, to the school. They're there part of the time, but they might be at the public school part of the time. I don't think that, when you're talking system wide needs, a lot of times the districts respond based on what that need is at that time. And they can pull, you know, they might have five schools or five high schools or five, they can hopefully pull and, and that needs to happen. But I don't know that you're talking apples to apples when you're talking private school. You're not, I don't think you're going to get that in most private schools. You're not going to have all that extra pair. You may or may not, but I, from what I've seen over the years, you don't have that.
Yeah, generally don't. Thank you. Okay. Now, the way we're going to mix you isn't quite as easy as we've done in the last couple of rounds, but we, we want to do this. So Ann's going to go with Betty. Ben's going to go with Janet. This is the easy part. Then it gets a little harder because when we get to the end, when you, when we got, when we have 10, it, you end up with two. Jim, you're going to go with Melanie. Deana's going with Mark, and Michelle and Jean will be together. So I apologize for the left half of the room. And the way I'm looking at it, has to move a little bit more. And we'll give yourself five minutes. This is going to be the last area that we're going to get to today, which we'll talk about at the end. We have two left. Any clarifying questions for myself or Haley or Brad before we get some comments here on this area? Already we had some great comments, so I know this is eliciting a lot of comments. But any questions? Other than Ben likes my fan.
It's 15 degrees cooler than this.
I don't have to bring the big one anymore. Some, yeah, Ann?
You know, I think one of the things that falls on us is to make sure we do have qualified teachers. I know Dr. Schrock would say we have some of the least qualified science teachers now that we've ever had. I'd be interested in hearing more from him on that and why that is and what we could do about it. But I'd be, you know, I think one thing we could dig into is, I know we do it in the accreditation system. They have to report like how many licensed teachers they have, you know, and that kind of thing, or how many are teaching out of, out of their realm, if you will. But I think making sure that we are hiring qualified teachers is something we, we can stay on top of. And then it kind of gets back to tying into the teacher prep program, too.
Okay, good. Other thoughts, comments? By the way, because I know that many of you don't come to the podium to present. It, it, you do have to really turn to get to both sides of the room when you're up here. You just, it's not just as easy as the head turn. So I want to make sure that I can see everyone. Other thoughts? So we have two more areas to go over. We're going to do that in March. Then you will have the data presented to you and a chance to kind of understand the data, ask good questions. That's the easy part. And it's, what are we going to do with this? Right? What are the strategies that we want to implement? What are the guidelines? What are the toolkits? How do we want to present this? And how do we want to deliver it back to the local districts? What do you want to mandate? What do you want to encourage, whether it's with higher ed or, you know, or partners? That's the tough work, right? That's the, but we've got to go through and understand it. And then we'll make the next phase from that. That's why when we looked at the 15 data, you say, why did that take all the way from late 15 to early 17? Because it's a process by which you have to take and start to formulate that out. And this will take us a while to get this done in the way of which you want to do it, which is balancing the local control with what you want to accomplish. And as Ann said, is it, we need to make sure that the qualifications are really high? And if so, how do we balance that with what I know Jean's going to say? Randy, if we don't get more teachers in western Kansas, we won't run the class itself. Right? And those are, those are the really difficult things we have to just think about and wrestle with, among others. Thank you. I hope this wasn't quite as, I won't say intense, but, but really brain stretching as I think yesterday may have been for you, you know, in listening to all of those topics. But we'll continue this. Haley, thank you. Thanks to all of our researchers. And as I said, Haley can't wait to be with you again in March to share with you. But thank you for your work on this project. And Mr. Porter, I will turn it back over to you for the rest of the meeting.
Thank you. At this time, you have a list of current travel requests on your, in your packet. Are there additions to travel? Ann?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm sorry I had a couple of things come up after the deadline, but it looks like I'm going to be at the Lawrence School Board meeting on the 14th. And then at Rossville High on the 22nd.
Okay, any other? Michelle?
I will be at Gardner this coming Friday, visiting with, meeting the new temporary superintendent possibly. And Frank Bell will be meeting with the principal. And Frank Bell will be meeting with the principal of the high school and then with another team of people, so.
Anything else? Seeing nothing else, the motion will be in order to approve the travel request. Dina makes that motion. Gene seconds. All in favor, please raise your hand. Oh, the motion carries nine zero. Committee reports start with policy, but there's been an alteration on something that the policy committee said yesterday. So I'm going to ask Mark to talk about the update and then I'm going to call on Gene.
One of the issues that we discussed in the policy committee related to a specific policy that referred to three members of the board being appointed, no more than three members of the board being appointed to a committee. And I, when I, we were looking at that, the kind of the legislative history or the rationale for that was that the previous statute referred to the majority of the quorum of the membership, which is different than what the statute reads now. So now, now, an open meeting is defined as a majority of the membership. And so thanks to Janet Wall for reminding me of that legislative change. And we, and so the conclusion is, not only the policy committee, is it related to our review of, of certain policies, but I believe some business of the board in terms of attendance. Anything less, five or less, would, would not be a, considered a formal meeting of the board as defined by the statute. And therefore, you wouldn't have to give notice and you wouldn't be in violation of any of those particular subparts of the Open Meetings Act.
Okay, thank you. Now, Gene, and I've got Interstate Migrant Council. So while you've got the floor, you can just go on and on.
The policy committee met yesterday at lunch and we reviewed pages six through 12 of the policy that mostly dealt with boardmanship, election of officers, the committee principals and the appointments to committees and commissions. We came up with a few revisions, including the one that Mark just discussed. And we will be working on 13 through 20, which largely deals with board member operations, travel, citizen open forum and public hearings. So if you want to take a look at the policy and have any comments on that you'd like to relay to us. We won't be doing this next meeting, but it will be not March, but April. So we're trying to have a month in between each time on policy.
Okay, what about migrant?
On the migrant committee, they had their annual convention in New Orleans, but they had a virtual option, which I, I participated in. It was a three-day meeting and there was apparently quite a good crowd in New Orleans. And they had several speakers that were really helpful. One was the Director of the Office of Migrant Education from the federal government. And then they had a director from the USDA Office of Partnerships that deals with school support and rural programs that helps out with the migrant programs. And they really went into some details about how they had dealt with, with the COVID situation for migrant families, the needs that those students had and their families. And these are, these really are very basic needs. They, they, they experienced, like we did, an inability to contact some of those students that they'd had previously, a loss of enrollment. And so they tried to go out into the areas, the agricultural areas across the country and locate these people because they are migrant, they move. And they have very needs that we really wouldn't even consider. Some of these folks live in tents despite the rain and the cold wherever they may be. And their living conditions and their needs are very basic. So we try to keep, they try to keep working diligently to ensure they keep contact with the students and try to provide for the entire family. We also had a speaker from the Director of Migrant Education from Vermont who talked about the overview of the Vermont program and the issues that they had experienced, which were largely the same. But it's really interesting to me because I don't think migrant when I think Vermont. Those two don't necessarily go together. But they talked about the dairy industry, the apple industry there, maple syrup, and Christmas trees was another thing that we get from Vermont that I wouldn't have thought of. And all of those require laborers that, that move around for those types of activities. So it's really an experience to be on this committee because you kind of see what the agricultural issues are across the country. So it's, it's pretty interesting. But that was the, the annual meeting and there was, you know, a lot of anecdotes and stories that people had to tell. So it was a very interesting meeting. Thank you.
And Ann, I call on you to ask your question and then go ahead and talk about student voice.
I didn't have a question. I just wanted to talk about student voice.
Oh, okay. Well, you're on my list to talk about student voice.
Cool. So you want me to go ahead and go?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I'll just bring to your attention two documents that are in your folder. One is a one-page summary of kind of what we did this last year. And then the other is a summary of the comments that we got at the CTSO luncheon last month. So I encourage you to take a look at that. Our committee's going to meet before the March meeting to develop a short list of questions that we would like to focus on this year. So when you go out, and we would really encourage you to go out and meet locally with students, that we hope you will include our questions in, in what you're doing with them. A couple of things I'll bring to your attention. We met with quite a few leadership groups this year across the state. And one thing we really noticed was a stark lack of students of color in any of them, whether it was CACIA or not CACIA, but particularly CACIA organizations. There just weren't many kids of color. So we're looking for ways this year to, one, connect with kids who aren't in leadership groups, you know, who have needs as well. Like I'm going to try to meet with a group of students who are on suspension, you know, and, you know, connect with ordinary kids who, who don't, you know, float to the top of the organization in their schools. But I'm also developing, I'm getting a list of conferences for this spring and summer that are going to be around the state. And we could sure use your help in covering some of those if you have some time. But we'll also bring that back to you in March and hope we can get a broad range of folks out visiting with kids. And if you have any questions about any of that, be glad to ask or answer.
Questions for Ann? Are there any, anything I missed? Dina?
The Prescription Drug and Opioid Committee has been meeting on a bimonthly basis. But there was something this month, last month, that I thought was something that you all needed to hear. Fifty-four percent of drug overdoses in the first six months of 2021 were laced with fentanyl. And our drug overdose number has risen exponentially. It's, it's really becoming an issue. The drug of choice, 50% say is meth. But when they test the methanol, it quite often has fentanyl in it. And it's being trafficked to the U.S. through Mexico, basically. So you need to be aware of that. There is a bill to kind of help those individuals who are regular meth users to hopefully not overdose. Because if they overdose on fentanyl, it's generally deadly. And the bill would remove fentanyl test strips from the list of possession. And that way, individuals who are users of meth and even cocaine is oftentimes laced with fentanyl. So, but they can use these test strips to ensure that they don't ingest that drug if it, if it has fentanyl in it. So if, I wanted you to know that if you hear that they're removing those from test strips or the test strips from bills, from possession, the list of possession, you might be a little concerned. So this is intentional to save lives.
Okay, thank you. Melanie?
Thank you. Chair Porter, if it's okay with you, I'd like to share an update for both the graduation requirements, task force and communications.
Go right ahead.
Jim's not here to, to wear the graduation hat. And he did mention yesterday that the graduation task force was supposed to finally meet in person in January. And of course, first due to Omicron spread and then next a snowstorm, we were unable to meet. And so that meeting has finally been rescheduled for February the 16th, I believe. Sorry, 17th, thank you Peggy. The group did meet last Thursday over Zoom in the midst of the snow. And the leaders of the four subcommittees shared their reports and answered questions. And so this was an opportunity to kind of update the group in a, in a big way. This was a mid, mid-project report back to the entire task force of 35-plus people on where each of the subcommittees is at, as far as the conversations that are happening inside that subcommittee and then what they will contribute to the overall project. And so where we are right now, the next phase is a survey has been developed that will go out to the public. Parents, educators, community members, everyone will be invited to fill out the survey. And so that preliminary survey is up and online right now. And then I'll shift and put on my communications hat and say that Jim and I, since we also are, are the communications committee for the board, we will be working with staff here at KSDE to figure out how we can share that information out to the larger community. And then we'll also be looking to you board members to share it within your district so that we can get a lot of feedback on what those preliminary, I call them kind of almost a final draft, plans look like. So in May, the graduation requirements task force will then come back with what is hopefully a fairly finalized report for the board to share that progress and then we'll go from there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else? If not, Mark.
Thank you. My topic today is redistricting and reapportionment. The words are used interchangeably. And I'll, I know we, there were some people that have to be at a noon meeting. I have circulated the case from the U.S. District Court in Federal District of Kansas from 2012 where the district maps were decided. I'm not sure if it went through or not, but I'm also going to send you a separate email summary of just some of the points that I think are worthy of discussion and understanding as, as that goes, as you look at what might happen over the next couple of months. A quick synopsis of some of those points related to redistricting is that this process affects you as redistricting and reapportionment impacts the 10 State Board of Education districts. You individually and collectively can participate in the process, both at the various committee levels leading up to the, the time when the legislature attempts to, to draft and prepare districts. You can submit your own plans if sponsored by a legislator. So any, any member of the public or any organization can submit a proposed plan. And so that, in the case of, there was a timeline established by the Legislative Committee and 15 different plans were submitted. It doesn't tell you who submitted them. They're given a, a generic name. And, and those 15 plans would have been sponsored and submitted along the way to go into the process for consideration. This kind of a, a, a process, you would say, well, what's, you know, kind of what's the timeline? And I think the target date would be June 1st of 2022 because that's the candidate filing deadline in Kansas. And so if you have, as it relates to your dis, you know, the State Board of Education districts, if there are changes to the districts that would impact, you know, the residency requirement and so would want to know in advance of that candidate deadline what the new or adjusted districts are. The, in 2012, the, the legislature attempted on a couple of occasions to draw maps. It went to the Supreme Court and then ultimately it was resolved by the Federal District Court. And their final decision came out on June 12th. I don't know, I think that the candidate filing deadline would have been approximately the same. And so that would be kind of your time period here in the coming months if a, an acceptable district map is not adopted and approved by the, by all three branches of government. A couple of basic facts to consider as you're understanding the redistricting process. It's based on the U.S. Census. It's conducted every 10 years. The, the districts that are impacted right now are set forth in the Kansas, and the procedure is in the Kansas Constitution, Article 10, Section 1. It's a, the redistricting is an ongoing and continuous process. If you, I was kind of surprised to look at the timeline that there's phases and, and data that's collected. And essentially after the maps were drawn in 2012, certain phases of that process started and it's a continuous process. Redistricting involves all three branches of the Kansas government. Primarily, the responsibility is with the legislature. The governor would approve or veto a plan. And then it goes to the Kansas Supreme Court for a, a final order of approval. The attorney general's involved by presenting the plan that is approved by the legislature to the Kansas Supreme Court. And there's some pretty specific and tight deadlines for the Supreme Court to ratify or approve the, the plan that's submitted. The federal law requires all state participation in the program to be through a nonpartisan liaison. The Kansas Legislative Research Department serves as the nonpartisan liaison for the state of Kansas. I'm, I'm, I find that the Kansas Legislative Research Department website has a lot of information on a variety of topics. And so you're probably already accustomed to going there regularly for your work and looking at what, what's going on. I'll send you the link, but there's quite a bit of background information and fact sheets and various maps and things that you can find by going to the Legislative Research Department website on this issue. Members of the public can submit plans, as I've mentioned. But when the legislator, legislation that goes to the Supreme Court will give an opportunity for other interested parties to submit briefs. So it's not just in submission of the plan, but parties, organizations, individuals, groups can submit amicus briefs to the Kansas Supreme Court. And in the case of 2012, I think there were twenty-some groups that submitted amicus briefs, many individuals. At least, maybe not proposing their own plan, but at least articulating their concerns with what the ultimate plan might be. So there are, there are points in this process that can be, help to be influenced, the, influence the outcome. The legal procedure, as I mentioned, is found in Article Ten, Section One. I'm going to circulate that, but the, essentially, it's, as I say, it's a pretty tight deadline. The, once the, the, the legislation redrawing the districts is approved, it would have, it would go for publication in the register. The Attorney General has to petition the Supreme Court. And the Supreme Court, within thirty days from filing of the petition, would enter a judgment saying, yes, this is approved or it's not approved. If it's declared invalid, they can remand it to the legislature to do additional work. Or the, the Supreme Court could look at that, all that, all that, the maps, the data, the briefing of the parties, and come up with its own, its own maps. In, in my understanding, and trying to recall what happened in 2012, the legislature had, I think, a special session. And so that, it was not resolved by the Kansas Supreme Court in that, in, in that year. A lawsuit was filed for declaratory judgment in the federal court. And the federal court took that and, and made the decision. I tried to find out if there was anything, you know, why it didn't get resolved in front of the Kansas Supreme Court. And I wasn't able to find a specific answer to that. Although in, in, it's not entirely unusual because in 1982, the federal court also resolved the redistricting maps. As the commissioner was, and I were visiting briefly about it yesterday, I, I think it's safe to conclude that at, at one point or another, whether it's Kansas Supreme Court or the Federal District Court in Kansas, the ultimate, final map will be decided by the court system with input from various parties and constituents. Then ultimately, the judgment of the Supreme Court will be final. And will, that will then draw the final legislative district maps unless, of course, the, the U.S. Federal District Court makes that determination. What is the standard? What, what is, you know, what, what would be fair and reasonable? So when I consider that issue, I think, well, what, you know, what's the ultimate goal or outcome? And I'm just going to go through the various factors that, that were articulated in the 2012 decision. So the districts are equal in population. Based upon the population, that means that seven hundred thirty-four thousand, four hundred and seventy persons per congressional district would be approximated. This is up from seven hundred and thirteen thousand persons in 2012. The basic legal concept is one person equals one vote. The courts would look at the racial composition, and they would look at trying to keep the basic concept of one person, one vote intact. Redistricting plans will have neither the purpose nor the effect of diluting minority voting strength. So obviously, the, the parties, the political parties involved have certain outcome, results-oriented, you know, goals. But the ultimate plan should not have the purpose nor the effect of diluting minority voting strength. One of the other main factors that are considered are that districts should attempt to recognize, quote, "community of interests," close quote, when that can be done. And so that considers social, cultural, racial, ethnic, and economic interests common to the population of the area. And so that could be open for determination, but could certainly impact the individuals or the groups that might want to influence the outcome or file an amicus brief because their community of interest would be adversely affected. If possible, preserving the core of the existing districts is expected to be undertaken, undertaken when considering the community of interests. So preserving the core of, of those districts. And whole counties should be in the same congressional district, just to the extent possible. It's not required, but if possible. And then districts should be as compact as possible and contiguous. So I'm going to leave it there, and I'll send you a follow-up email. You have a copy of the case if you want to read it that considered this issue in 2012. And that concludes my report.
And I'm relatively certain the genius district will be safe. Future agenda items, I want to bring up a couple of things. There is a perception. We, we're in a hurry. I mean, we've got to get, we've got to get a lot of stuff down here in the next ten minutes. I'm sorry, I reacted. I shouldn't have.
If you have a question for me, I'll, I'll stay after for sure.
Okay. We emphasize academic achievement. For us, it's a given. But for the, for people that criticize us, it is not a given. The statement was made at the, whenever the, whenever we met with the legislators last couple of weeks ago, the statement was made that a board member in a committee this summer said that we only care, we only, that our whole process only emphasized fifteen percent academic performance. I didn't say that, and Anne didn't say that, and we were the only two people that testified there. They're conflating that thing that Randy showed us, that business said, that this is what business is looking at. And that was just simply a false statement. I think, though, we need to address that in future to, 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 as we are discussing it, we have more emphasis on academic performance. One other thing, and then I'll. We set standards, we've talked about it a lot. We've set standards high. If we were to adjust those standards, the first thing that would be said is that we're lowering standards. We'd be criticized for that. School districts are having difficulty meeting those standards because they're so high. I think we need to look at, at some point, a long-range plan to address that, which may be looking at different ways to assess. That's, that's a huge thing, and it's something that won't be done immediately. Anne, go ahead.
Thank you. I'll just be quick. When they had the hearing on a week ago or two, Monday, one witness also said that I said, "We only spend fifteen percent of our time on academics." And I kind of let it go. But then I saw Chairman Williams in person with, when I was with the school counselors, and she repeated that misstatement. She goes, "Well, you guys only spend fifteen percent of your time on academics." So I followed that short conversation up with an email to her to say, "No, we were only talking about what the feedback was from parents and business people." She sent an email to me, which I will share with you, that confirmed she went back and listened to my testimony and that I was only reporting the results of the survey, not how much time we spend on academics. And she told me she would correct that in committee. So if she has not done that, maybe that's something you guys can talk about today.
Thank you. Any other future business items? And we're, we have to really move because we need to be across the street in a few minutes. Go ahead, Betty.
It is not specific, and I'll be brief. I do appreciate having the, the working part of our meeting where we got a chance to discuss items as, as a group instead of operating in a silo. So I would just like to encourage that maybe when things come up like the, the report on the tour of the results, that we still incorporate enough time where we can have a working session.
I, I, I agree completely. Janet?
I will not say anything. I will let Randy know what I was going to say, maybe we could share it with the board. Thank you.
We've changed the, we met this morning. We assumed that we were only going to have three people that were meeting with legislators. We're doing that in a very few minutes. And so at that time, we thought there would be three. So it was going to be the legislative liaisons and me. Since that time, we've discovered that if there are five that can go, Janet is going to go back. And I've, since we're going to be discussing cybersecurity, I've asked Melanie to join us today in that group. However, I'm sure that there are others of you that want, that may want to participate in the future. So if you do, please let Peggy know. And we'll try to, we'll try to work that in there. You know, if things go as planned, there are three more sessions. One of them, two weeks from today, one of them the day af, right after our March meeting, and one of them two weeks after that. Those are the ones, they're always on Wednesday at noon. Thank you that went to the Care's Breakfast. Remember that next Wednesday, a week from today, we're meeting with the Board of Regents at their place at nine forty-five. Thursday, okay, yeah, it is at Thursday, a week from tomorrow. You've got the information that the K-toy banquets are virtual, May, March the twenty-sixth and twenty-seventh. I'm sorry I'm having to rush us, but we really need to be there on time. And anything else? We are adjourned.